Good evening, everybody. Today is August the 4th. This is Monday at 7:00 PM and welcome to the Moscow City Council Regular Meeting. I call this meeting to order. And with that, I will ask Counselor Wayne Kraus to lead us, if you would please.
Would rise. I do lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation, one government, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Thank you, Wayne. And with that, I'll move into item number one, which is the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, Walter made a motion to approve the consent agenda with Tom second. I will start with the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, and they pass six to zero. So we'll move on to item number two, which is Staff Recognition Police Reserve Pinning Ceremony. Chief David Duke, you have the podium, sir.
Honorable Mayor Lambert and distinguished council members. On behalf of the Police Department, I want to thank you for this opportunity to hold our badge pinning ceremony here tonight and to commemorate the graduation of four exceptional volunteers from the Idaho Post Level One Reserve Academy. This transition event is a result of your untrusting support to reinstate our volunteer reserve program last October. Through an intense screening process and appointments, they meet the same standards as a commissioned police officer. These four volunteers have displayed a remarkable resilience through the last seven months as they were trained, assessed, and tested in the basic police reserve officer procedures and practices. It is my honor to introduce them to you tonight. A face familiar to us is Tom Picarello. Tom is our Network and Systems Administrator and has been with the city for the last five years. As a resident of the city, he wanted to become a volunteer reserve officer so he could be more involved in the safety of our community. He has a passion for forensics and will be an asset with the ever-changing intelligence technology, especially in complex computer cases. Thank you, Tom. Dr. Benjamin Barton is an Assistant Professor in Psychology and Communication Study with the University of Idaho and has been for the last six years. Ben holds a doctoral degree in Developmental Psychology from the University of Alabama, Birmingham, and a master's and bachelor's from the University of Memphis in Psychology. Ben has a heart for safety, especially children, and is currently the President of the Officer Newville Safety Fair Board. And he's also been active in safe routes to school and green bike programs. His experience and expertise in pedestrian and bike safety will be an invaluable asset to our department. Thanks, Ben. Mackenzie Fosberg is a Criminal Justice Major at Washington State University. She's also employed at Safeway here in Moscow for the last two years. Mackenzie is eager to contribute her time and skills in providing safety and justice to our community in the most upstanding and efficient way. She's proficient in sign language and volunteers her time to help charities such as Relay for Life and Out of the Darkness. Mackenzie's drive for helping others in need and her diversity in her skills will bring to our department is so unboundless or unlimited. Thank you, Mackenzie. Kyle Linderman is a recent graduate of Washington State University and obtained his bachelor's degree in Criminal Justice. While attending WSU, he participated as an intern with the WSU Police Department in both 2012 and 2013, and he has over 400 hours of volunteer experience. As a reserve officer, the department and community will benefit from his prior law enforcement involvement, especially within the university culture. Thank you, Kyle. At this time, I'd like to ask our Reserve Coordinator, Corporal Art Lenquist, to come forward and describe briefly our program and Reserve Academy.
Thank you, Chief. The Reserve Auxiliary Unit has existed at the Moscow Police Department for many decades and has helped supplement their ranks and files of the full-time commissioned officers, up till about 10 years ago, when it was more or less disbanded because of state regulations at that time. Since then, those regulations have changed and due to a lot of help, a lot of, due to several members of this board up here, we were able to start the reserve program up again. So what you see here is kind of the maiden voyage of the program again. Many of today's senior officers and command staff and city leaders receive their law enforcement or public service start in the Moscow Police Reserve Program. Law enforcement, like a few other careers, is a call to public service. Although at times there may be events that are exciting and worthy of storytelling years down the road, most of the time, it's dealing with citizens during a low point in their lives, whether it be a lost personal property or even the loss of a loved one. It is because of this that it takes a special type of person to fulfill their duties with service, pride, integrity, a care and ability, and a performance excellence. These are the core values of the Moscow Police Department and are what every action an officer takes is measured by. Therefore, selecting the best individuals the community has to offer is essential. The Reserve Cadets before you today decided to step up to this challenge. They started the process with an application and a letter of interest detailing their qualifications, which met the same college and life experience standard as a full-time officer. From there, they moved to the physical fitness test, where they were put through a morning filled with push-ups, sit-ups, 300 mi- 300 miles.
300 miles.
300 meter sprint, they did real well. 300 meter sprint, mile and a half run, and a vertical jump. An interview board consisting of community leaders and law enforcement personnel followed with the top four candidates moving to interview with the command staff. Upon the recommendation of the Chief of Police, the candidates moved to the background process, where they completed a physical exam to determine their physical readiness and their, also a psychological exam to determine that they were of sound mind. And yes, we did determine that Tom is of sound mind, so good job there. And a polygraph examination, which explored all their past actions and life choices to ensure that they had lived a good and honorable life thus far. We then confirmed all this by interviewing their friends, their coworkers, their neighbors, and even went in their homes and interviewed their families. Once we were confident we had the best of the best, they began the Reserve Academy. The academy opened with 40 hours of online law training, which I'm sure was exhilarating, followed by 233 hours of classroom and hands-on training with topics including ethics, investigations of all sorts, courtroom procedure, arrests and defense tactics, firearm and emergency vehicle operations. The classroom training was conducted over the Idaho Educational Interactive Network. Plans with Moscow School District fell through at the last moment when unexpectedly their system was taken offline for the construction and renovation of the high school. A desperate search a day before the academy was to begin for an alternate location led us to Genesee High School, where they literally opened the doors to our reserves, sometimes as early as 6:00 AM and as late as 10:00 PM every Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday for a five-month period. Additionally, several officers from the Moscow Police Department, the Lewiston Police Department, and the Latah County Sheriff's Office volunteered to instruct many of the hands-on courses. And I wanted to personally thank those members for their contribution. On July 22nd, the Reserve Cadets took their final test and earned the right to advance to the next phase. Therefore, Chief Duke, it is now my great honor to advise you these Reserve Cadets have completed all required training and stand before their community, ready to take their oath of office as Moscow Police Reserve Officers. Officers, please step forward.
Now invite our city clerk Stephanie Colas to administer the oath of office.
Reserve Cadets, attention!
Could y'all please raise your right hand? And if you have convenient. I solemnly swear or affirm
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho.
That I will faithfully discharge all the duties of Reserve Police Officer
That I will faithfully discharge all the duties of Police Officer.
Of Moscow, Idaho
Of Moscow, Idaho.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
How do you sign your oaths?
You should come over and sign them one at a time.
Thank you. The reserves will now be pinned. The police badge represents both the authority and the accountability of the position you have taken as you have taken your oath and to uphold it. By wearing the badge, you are now entrusted to protect and serve our community. The shield stands for our mission of serving with honor, integrity, and commitment. You are expected to distinguish yourself in a manner of humility, loyalty, courage, truth, and justice, because we expect no less and we demand that you hold yourself to the highest values of the law enforcement profession. It is also known we cannot meet these expectations alone. As part of the ceremony, each reserve designated who would pin the badge, not just on their uniform, but over their heart, as a reminder of the devoted sport needed to endure the day-to-day challenges and dangers encountered in our service to our fellow citizens. Would the following family member or friend come forward when acknowledged? For Reserve Officer Tom Picarello, his wife Michelle will pin his badge. For Reserve Officer Ben Barton, his wife Amanda will pin his badge. For Reserve Mackenzie Fosberg, her girlfriend will pin her badge. And for Reserve Officer Kyle Linderman, his mother Sylvia Linderman will pin his badge.
It hurts for a second.
I want to thank those that have devoted so much time here, that stand before you, and I'd like to just give them a round of applause at this time. Reserves, you are dismissed to the reception awaiting you across the street. Thank you very much. Mayor and council, just want to thank you again for taking the time out of your meeting for this special recognition and honoring those who volunteer to make our community a safer and more enriched place to live and work.
Congratulations.
Very proud of you guys. Good job.
Before you guys leave, hey, Tom, hold up, Tom. I got a few words to say about you guys before you go to your little party.
Walk out on the mayor. You know that.
First off, thank you, Chief Duke and Officer Lenquist, but you guys are a premier group in the reserves. There's a huge program for our city and for our law enforcement here in our area. We're all very, very proud of you. And so I want you to understand that it does not go unnoticed. What you're doing is wonderful, and we're all very, very proud of you. Enjoy yourselves, and we look forward to seeing you in the future. Thank you, and I would like to see another round of applause.
Y'all be safe out there.
Now you're dismissed. Enjoy yourselves, and it was nice meeting the families of all the reserves. Thank you very much, and welcome to Moscow. Enjoy your visit here, so have a nice evening.
Got to be a little disconcerting, roll in and face up with a bunch of cops.
Small fellow. Definitely. The last two times I've been over, spent my, you know, and he was
Was he polite about it?
Oh, he was great. He was great. It's just that I had
Okay, folks, we'll continue the rest of our council meeting. And item number three is Mayor's Appointments. And I'm going to call out the names here in front of the council. I've proposed a loyalty bond for the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission. Chris Sokol, the Historic Preservation Commission. Jonathan Gradden, the Paradise Path Task Force. And Kayla Baker, Sustainable Environment Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that the council approve the proposed appointment.
Second that.
Okay, Walter made the motion to approve all of these, and Tom, the second on the appointments. I'll start the roll with Art.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and that's six to zero. Are any of you folks in attendance tonight, please stand up if you are, so we can see who you are and introduce you to the council up here. If they are not here, okay, we'll move on to item number four, which is Public Comment and Mayor's Response Period. So anybody who would like to address the council, things that are not on the agenda or something that is not in front of the Board of Adjustments or Planning and zoning, can please step forward, or anything else that is on the agenda tonight.
Lady up there.
Mayor. Oh. Do you need to open it up, Mike? A book? Does this over like this? His name is Mike Smith. I have a question. You have a question, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you help me with your question? Do you have a question? You are. I'm not sure I understand, Mike. You have a question? C. A. N. Can you help me? I. On, beyond. On, beyond. See, I. Okay. C. See, I. T. Not sure what T means. Thank you. Want to thank somebody here? Not quite sure what to say from here, Mike. C. I. City. Okay, I'm getting it, Mike. I'm slow, but I'm getting it. You want to thank the city? You want to speak to the city? Okay, city. I. B. Okay, can I be? O, that's an O. Can I be on? City. Can I be on? C. Can I see you? On, you want to see, on. Is that TV? Is this what it is? Is this what it is, Mike? No, it's not it. I. I think it's like, would you like? B. On. C. Okay, that's B. Okay, that's B. C. A. A. V. O. I. Voice. You'd like to be a voice, Mike? People. P.
With.
With.
De.
De.
Disabilities.
With disabilities? With disabilities?
Who?
Want to speak for people with disabilities? Okay. S.
So.
R. So, Y. U, for. T. A. K. I. Taking. U. P. Y. O. U. R. T. I. And I'm.
Who?
Taking up your time. Taking up my time, you know, well, it's okay, Mike. We appreciate you coming in and putting this back in your backpack. Would you like me to read that card you get sent to the city? Okay, here, let me have that. This was a card that was brought in, and it says, it's a thank you note. It says, Dear Mayor Lambert, my name is Mike Smith. I want to thank you very much for all the sidewalk improvements. I have had to move over in the past. You are doing a great job. Thanks again, Mike Smith. And this card says, you brighten the day in a special way. Thanks. U. R. T. I. And I'm.
Taking up your time.
Taking up my time, you know. Well, it's okay, Mike. We appreciate you coming in and putting this back in your backpack. Would you like me to read that card you get sent to the city? Okay. Here, let me have that. This was a card that was brought in and it says... It's a thank you note. It says, "Dear Mayor Lambert, my name is Mike Smith. I want to thank you very much for all the sidewalk improvements. I have had to move over in the past. You are doing a great job. Thanks again. Mike Smith." And this card says, "You brighten the day in a special way. Thanks." So that should be something that we all should remember. Thank you so much, Mike. Let me zip your bag up here. Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mike. Well, folks, with that, I think we'll move on. Okay, would you like to come forward and state your name, please, and your address and hit the podium? Well, give somebody's address. We'll go from there.
I think she's on the agenda.
What'd you say, Dan?
You're on the agenda.
Where?
Coming. You're coming up. You're not next.
You're number four.
You're number six.
Number six.
You're coming up, Sandy.
I didn't see it on the agenda.
You're on here if you want to say...
Wrong.
Yep, you're here, so. Okay, well, we... We promise. We're not going in any particular congenial order tonight, folks, but we are moving and we're making progress. But I'll move on to number five, which is a...
David has some.
Oh, David will come on. Okay. Okay.
David Pierce, 716 East F Street. Moscow is justly proud of its efforts to involve its citizens in the making of decisions. That is why the city council has established its commissions. Each commission has been tasked with learning about, discussing, and making recommendations to the council regarding policy in a specialized area important to the making... Important to making the city of Moscow the unique place that it is. Recently, there have been policy items taken up by the city council, which it seems to me will have a significant impact on the future development of Moscow. They will help determine the manner in which our city develops. The commissions, by their very nature, provide a way for citizens to have a voice in the determination of that policy. That is precisely why the commissions are so important. These items... I'm looking at a word I used here, and I'm not sure that it's the word I want, but I'm going to use it anyway. Unfortunately, these items were not referred to the appropriate commissions before they were dealt with this policy here. In the future, it is my hope that the city and the council will provide the appropriate commissions with the opportunity to weigh in on important policy issues that are within their purview. I really hesitated about doing this, but there have been some things recently where the commissions could have had an opportunity to talk about and think about these things and say something to the council, and they did not have that opportunity, and I feel that that was a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I guess we'll... Any other public comment before I move on to the agenda, folks? Okay, thank you. We will move on to number five. Citizen Commission Report, Park and Recreation Commission. Dwight Curtis, sir, you have the podium.
Well, thank you. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Nancy Tribble. She's the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission this year, and she will give you your annual report on what the commission's been up to.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Tribble. I reside at 922 Clay Court in Moscow. And I'm looking forward to just giving you some information as to what the Parks and Recreation Commission has been up to. Please ask any questions as I go through the slides. Justin Mindon is one of our newer commission members, and Damon Burton, I believe, is probably one of our wiser...
Say old.
One of our wiser, more experienced.
Long-term.
Members. And there I am in the middle, catching fish.
Nice. Literally.
Literally. It's best way to fish. Susan Steele has been on since 2003. Arch Harner is one of our newer commission members. He's an attorney with the U of I, and we have Ted up there tossing the line. Anne Marie Bilderbach is our Vice Chair. She's been on since 2009. Mark Kennelen is relatively new, 2013, and Jacqueline is our newest member, and we're looking forward to her at our next meeting. Our mission statement, I think, is really important and really displays what our commission is about. The Moscow Parks and Recreation Department is a citizen-friendly and customer-driven organization established to create and maintain quality parks, recreational and educational services for all citizens that promote accessibility, quality of life, community involvement, and strategic planning for the community's future needs. Our 2004 commission goals were to develop better partnerships towards creation of Parks and Recreation Foundation, and we have a subcommittee currently exploring the possibility of a foundation. Our other goal is to fill commission vacancies, which we're very proud to say we have. This is something rather new. Development... Develop a thorough, healthy, active lifestyle program to focus for Parks and Recreation Program. And currently, the descriptions have been rewritten, and we're working on this. Complete development plans and secure funding for competitive horseshoe courts at Mountain View Park. Those plans have been completed, and we are currently working on funding, and we have a good support for that. And we are reviewing the master plan annually. Any questions? Okay. Provided policy recommendations for the updated youth scholarship program implemented in October. Parks and Recreation Master Plan adopted by the council in December of 2014. The Indian Hills Sixth Parkland Dedication with property purchase, and that naming process is underway, and the city council will be seeing that in October. The cyclocross course proposal recommendations to the council, you'll be seeing that this month. Ottness Park is under development to open fall of 2014. And as we know, the Moscow School District Community Ballfields are under development and moving right along. The Harvest Hill Subdivision Parkland Dedication Recommendation, exploring the establishment of our Parks and Recreation Foundation. The Blackboard Crossing Final Design Recommendations. Parks Capital Projects Cost Forecast. The Off-Leash Hour Proposal Recommendation for Mountain View Park, and that was for dogs to get some exercise off their leash. And then the Moscow Charter School comes to us yearly requesting some usage at the Herk Center for their recreation program. Additional issues and projects: Our Top Playground Equipment Recommendation for Rotary Park, Ottness Park, and the East City Park. Our Annual Parks and Facility Tours. Ridgeview Estate Subdivision Parkland Dedication Recommendation. Downtown Public Resting Project Proposal, which the council will see this month. And the Completion of the Parks and Facilities Historical Guide. Our upcoming 2015 Issues and Projects: Our Continued Implementation of Parks and Recreation Master Plan, The Annual Report on Youth Scholarship Programs with Recommendations, Updates to City Parks and Facilities Historical Guide, Our Facilities Assessment Study, and the Revamp of Gorbling Tennis Courts. Our Start Park Design Plan Processes for Undeveloped Park Priorities, Review and Recommendations for Parkland Dedication Policy, and Review and Recommendations for Addressing Parks and Facilities Accessibility Issues. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Nancy. Counselors, questions for Nancy? Very nice report you gave us, Nancy.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your support on our projects.
Tom?
Mr. Mayor, thanks to you, Nancy. I'm the current council liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission, and it always makes me proud to go to those meetings. They're a hard-working bunch of community volunteers, and they get lots of comments from the members of the community, and they handle those comments well. And they do a great job of managing our Parks and Rec Department, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, counsel, and thank you, Dwight.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, now we are going to move on to item six, Disaster Services Update. Sandy Rollins, you have the podium.
I apologize.
It's okay.
That's why they call me Disaster. For those that know me and those that don't know me, it could be a good thing and it could be a bad thing, so if you of you don't say anything, okay?
Sandy, could you pull the mic down to your...
I was going to say, I'm already standing up, so. For those that don't know me, I'm Sandy Rollins, better known as Disaster Sandy. I've been in the Disaster Services Office of Leito County for over 19 years, and I'm throwing in the towel. September, don't look surprised, Gary. I'm beating you out the door. September 30th is my last day. But believe it or not, I'll be working from home. I've already been asked to work on some projects. We have the most active volunteer program in the state of Idaho called the Community Emergency Response Team. We work with search and rescue on actual search and rescues. We've been called out for sandbagging. We normally participate in about 10 or 12 public education events a year. We're already up to 15 this year, just to promote emergency preparedness. So I will be doing that from home, and I already have a waiting list to do more training, training across state lines, the whole nine yards. So we've made national, state, and local news, so I'm pretty proud of the group. And then I just got an email the other day from District Health and American Red Cross for what they call the Volunteer Organizations Active in Disasters, to get one going in our region. So I'll still be working. And everybody's already asked me not to change my phone number, not to change my address, so I'll still be there. And if anybody has any questions, then I'll make sure I get that information out. But I would like to introduce my replacement is Mike Nealon. He is leading the sheriff's office, and he approached me about three years ago, about three years ago about my position. And he's done everything on his own time, all of his training, wherever I sent him, et cetera. So he came on board officially August 1 and will shadow me until October 1, and he knows how to get ahold of me, too, in case he gets stuck. So I wanted to introduce Mike. And thank you all for putting up with me for those 19-some-odd years.
Something tells me we'll still see some of you, Sandy. I know you're just not going to go away.
Yeah, I think I'm up to three projects now for the county. Like I said, one is state, and then for the volunteer program and the local meetings, so I've already been asked to stay on board with all those.
Mike, would you like to step up and say a few words, sir?
Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, Sandy. My name is Mike Nealon. I have been here since 2001, so I am a transplant up here, and whereupon I got into the sheriff's office and been there for over 13 and a half years. A lot of you know me. I've worked also on the Moscow Fire Department, Volunteer Ambulance Corps. And so I've been around throughout this community, and I come with this, with a military background, a search and rescue background, a fire background, some other areas you name, and I've done it out here. And I've worked with Sandy and approached her three years ago and started training and started doing all my development that I could to ensure that I've worked over in this direction. And starting October 1, I'll be taking over the county for all the disasters in this area, including Moscow. Any questions for anybody? Most of you know how to get ahold of me.
Counsel had questions for anything to say to Mike before you...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy, for the 19 years you've done. This has been terrific. Thank you for all your help.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you both.
We have a long ways to go.
Okay, well, we'll move on to item seven, which is confirmation appointment of Brian Nickerson as Moscow Fire Chief. Gary Reidner, will you present, sir?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm happy to forward your appointment as Moscow Fire Chief. Brian Nickerson, whose photo you see on the screen. Chief Nickerson is currently a Division Chief with the Los Alamos New Mexico County Fire Department. He's also a fire marshal, was the chief of the Wright City, Missouri Volunteer Fire Department for five years. He has 25 years' experience in the fire service. His appointment comes after a national search that was conducted. We had over 40 applications that were submitted. Those were gleaned down to 17. 17 applications were then forwarded to an interview committee, and John Weber was on that interview committee, as were representatives of the fire department and the Volunteer Ambulance Company Rural Commission. As you know, our Moscow City Fire Chief also serves as Fire Chief for the Moscow Rural Fire District. From there, we interviewed four candidates. You all had a chance to meet those candidates and participate in a reception for them. After that, Chief Nickerson was interviewed by the interview team and forwarded on to Mayor Lambert and myself for interviews on Friday, two weeks ago. I traveled to Los Alamos, interviewed references for Chief Nickerson. He comes highly recommended. He, if confirmed tonight, will be on the job on the 25th. He will be sworn in if confirmed by the council tonight by the city clerk at our first meeting in September. With that, I would submit his name for confirmation of mayor's appointment as Moscow's next Fire Chief.
Mr. Mayor? Well, I'll let the interviewer... Tom?
Yeah, excuse me. I was part of the committee, and this gentleman was the number-one candidate amongst all of the committee members, with the exception of one, and on that committee member had him number two. So with his experience, with the amount of time he's been in the firefighting industry, with his experience in training, his experience with volunteers, and the budgetary process that he is familiar with, he came out as the number-one candidate. Luckily, we were able to... Bill felt the same way. Gary vetted him, and with that, I would make a motion that we confirm him as our next Fire Chief.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion before I move on with that? With other counselors? Okay, John made the motion to confirm. Brian Nickerson is our new Fire Chief, and Dan seconded that motion. I'll start the roll with Art. Aye.
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 Sounds like we got a new chief.
Yay.
Brian Nickerson. I'm looking, very much looking forward to having him on our team here in Moscow. I think he's going to be a huge addition for us, so.
As a matter of fact, he's traveling to Moscow on Wednesday, so should have a chance to get closer and more personal with our fire department as well as available to talk to the council or staff. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Gary. Okay, that ends our agenda. We'll move on to reports. Tom, you got anything on the admin committee?
I have no more to add than we've already approved. We had no administrative committee this last week as there was a combination of agendas onto Public Works Finance. And I have no reports from my commission meetings. The one that I sit on that met recently is just reported this evening, so.
Okay. I'll move on to Walter with Public Works and Finance, then.
Thank you, Mayor. There were a couple of three things on the Public Works Finance Committee that were not on agenda tonight. One of those was a report from Les McDonald and Public Works about their interest in looking at the intersection of 6th and Jackson Street, which has an unusual cross-traffic problem when you're running east on 6th Street. And he proposed or presented to us a couple of possible... a couple of possible ways to address that situation. The committee gave him a green light to go ahead and continue to pursue and work up more details and cost on the various options for that, so we will be seeing that in the future. We also got a report from Alisa Anderson, our grants writer, that Moscow, for the first time in quite a few years, has now been found by HUD to have more than 51% low and moderate income persons in our census area, and the meaning of that is that we can now use HUD Community Development Block Grants, which are administered by the Idaho Department of Commerce, citywide on infrastructure projects, water, sewer, streets, which we haven't been able to do in the past. We have used these grants for housing, for senior center items, and for the downtown revitalization of Friendship Square, but those are special projects that we were precluded from doing, any water, sewer, street projects previously. A third item that was on our agenda was a report from Dwight Curtis on the youth scholarship program. It was mentioned earlier during the Parks and Rec Commission Report. It seems to be fairly well on track. It looks like what the council did last year in revising how we were handling that program has worked out rather well. If you have any questions about details of that and so forth, Dwight would have those for you. Personally, a couple of three things that I've done the last couple of weeks was there was, again, with Dwight, a downtown restroom committee meeting on the 23rd, and they will become, Dwight will be bringing that forward to Public Works Finance at the next committee meeting, which will be this coming Monday, if I'm correct. Is that right, Gary?
Not certain. It was on.
He's nodding his head.
Is Dwight nodding back there?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so we'll be hearing for that at the next committee meeting, depending upon the committee action, that could come forward to council with a recommendation. There's been a lot of discussion over the 20 years I've been in Moscow, 20-plus years, about the need for downtown public restrooms, and possibly they've found a way to move that forward. On Saturday, the 26th, there was another survey at the farmer's market about people's attendance, about whether or not they find new foods in the market, whether or not they could identify some foods that we had some pictures of, and so, and a further attempt by the farmer's market people to gather data about the people that are coming to the market. I have been extremely impressed this entire season with the quantity of people moving through that market. I happened to drive by down Sixth Street at about a quarter to 1:00, a quarter to close this past Saturday, and could not see down the street, there were still so many people in the market. So that's continuing to be a big attraction for Moscow, a lot of people that are in town visiting, that have never come to it before, people from Pullman coming over, people coming up from Lewiston, so I think it's a very good, good thing for the city of Moscow. The last thing I've got, Mayor, is on the 31st, last Thursday, I attended a water summit planning meeting with John Kimberling and Paul, at Paul Kimball, to talk about the October, if I'm not mistaken, 16th, I think it is, water summit that will occur at the Best Western this year, it'll be moved back over to Moscow. So they are moving ahead with that annual project. This will be their 10th annual water summit, and with that, that's all I have.
Okay, Wayne?
Thank you, Mayor. The Board of Directors, Mark Trance, it met on the 22nd of July, pretty much business as usual. The only thing that's up in the air right now is there is a little bit of reorganization going on with Idaho Department of Transportation pertaining to the funding of CTAI, which is the advocate for public transportation funding, so we'll have to see how that shakes out. Gary will be going down to Boise for a meeting with CTAI, as will our Executive Director, Jenny, and Alisa is also going, and she'll have, they'll have a report back on that. And then on the 24th, Historical Preservation Commission met, they're continuing on their discussion of what they can contribute to the citizen survey questions, questionnaire coming up this year. And they gave out the Orchid Awards Sunday at McConnell Mansion, at the Ice Cream Social. And that's all I have.
Art?
None of my commissions met this past couple of weeks, they're coming up this week and the next, and I'll have reports after that.
Very good. Dan?
Didn't really have any city commissions, but there are some items of interest. On the 25th, the morning of the 25th, up at the courthouse, we had a tabletop exercise that was the first real, I don't even know if I'd call it real yet, but exercise that we went through as our, we call it our TMS team, it's our Tactical Emergency Medical Response Team, and the four of us had our first little sit together with the police and with other courthouse offices to go through a scenario with them as far as how we would be used in such a situation, and look forward to more about that. I think we'll probably hear more from Chief Duke about that in the future as we move forward with that. On the 27th, I also was at the Ice Cream Social there with the ambulance, and it looked like it would, even with the street construction, it was as well-attended as ever, so that was, that was good. And I'm glad to see that we got one lift of pavement on the street so far, so hopefully we'll, half of one tomorrow. Good. All right, so that'll be opened up for everybody by then. On the 29th, we, the fire department, the rural district had a mutual aid partners meeting that was pretty interesting, because they bring in all the other agencies from the area, and the big presentation this year actually came from police fire department with the fire they had in April, and they went through the, it's nice to have these go on when people do have a big event, because they go through what lessons they've learned and things like that, so. They pretty much just about ran police out of water when they fighting that fire, and were getting ready to basically start taking water out of the river, so it was, it was an interesting presentation, so, and I'm glad the Chief Button started having those annual meetings, and I hope Chief Nickerson continues those in the future, so. Other than that, I'm waiting for commission meetings this week, so looking forward to that.
John?
The only thing I had was the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 23rd. Unfortunately, I had another engagement, so I did not, did not attend. So I will catch up and make a presentation on both of them at the next meeting that we had, the meeting that's coming up at the next council meeting.
Okay. I had one major board meeting, it was airport board meeting, that met on the 30th, and besides the normal business, we also spoke about runway alignment, so that was the only board meeting that I had. Gary, do you have any reports?
The only report I have is, as Wayne indicated, I will be heading out tomorrow to the PTAC meeting, or at least our discussion about the PTAC and how ITD intends on moving forward with the contract with CTAI, and how mobility management is done in the state. As Wayne indicated, does have implications for our local transit companies, so we're very interested in that. Other than that, we have the first Monday meeting, I believe it is at noon.
11:30.
11:30, excuse me, at the golf course at the University of Idaho campus, so that will be on Wednesday at 11:30.
Okay.
Thank you.
Walter?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we adjourn this city council meeting and then reconvene for a budget, council budget workshop at 10 minutes after 8, according to the clock on the back wall.
Second. Okay, you have a motion, second. Ball in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This means that, folks, thank you.